This hearing of the Subcommittee on Department Operations, Oversight and Nutrition to examine the role of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program in relation to other federal assistance programs will come to order. Chair will recognize himself for an opening statement. First I want to thank you all for being here today to discuss a program that serves a vital role: Feeding the Hungry. Thank you to our witnesses for joining us today. I look forward to hearing your testimony. The purpose of today's hearing... The purpose of today's hearing is to examine the role of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or as we call it SNAP, in relation to other federal assistance programs such as the Temporary Assistance to N needy Families, or TANF, program and school meals. SNAP is the federal government's primary food assistance program that currently serves on average forty-seven million people per month. SNAP benefits are fully financed by the federal government and cost share between states and the federal government is in place for administrative costs only. No matter what side of the aisle you sit on, we can all agree on the importance of SNAP in helping those in need. However, with soaring deficits and out-of-control national debt, we must be mindful of this grave financial situation. We, as members of Congress, have a responsibility to the American people to oversee federal programs paid for by the taxpayer to ensure that they are operating in the most efficient, cost-effective manner. SNAP is a program that's been -- has seen considerable growth in recent years. Since 2008, the cost of the program has more than doubled. And while the recession has certainly played a part in the dramatic growth of the program, there have been policies put in place by the current administration to expand participation. It's my hope that today we can all learn more about these policies and take a look into the growth of SNAP. As you all know, my colleagues and I recently finished the lengthy process of passing a farm bill. And while I think I can speak for the rest of my colleagues in saying that I'm pleased to have that job behind us -- I know I speak for the Chairman when I say that. The job of Congress is never finished. We must continue to educate each other on federal programs and exercise our responsibility of oversight. One particular concern of mine, which we attempt to address in the farm bill, is the interaction of SNAP it has with the Low Income Heat Energy Assistance Program, or LIHEAP. The Food and Nutrition Act of 2008 and the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Act of 1981 provide that low-income housing receiving -- low-income households receiving any LIHEAP payments will also qualify for SNAP, the SNAP Standard Utility Allowance, or SUA. SUAs are a standardized amount used in place of actual utility costs to calculate a household's shelter costs when determining SNAP benefits and which can be used essentially to plus-up eligibility. Unfortunately, in the last several years, states have been taking advantage of a loophole in how LIHEAP payments interact with SNAP and with SNAP benefit calculations. Any amount of LIHEAP assistance allowed a household to automatically receive the SNAP SUA. Since SNAP benefits are 100% federal dollars, states have been using this loophole to bring more SNAP benefits to their state, increasing costs to the federal government. And I would add transferring wealth across the countryside. Consequently, there were approximately sixteen states and the District of Columbia that had been sending payments as low as ten cents to low-income households so they may take advantage of SNAP SUA. In the farm bill, we address this loophole by requiring a household to receive a minimum LIHEAP payment of $20 before they can receive the SNAP SUA. However, there have been a number of states, and I'll name them: New York, Connecticut, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Montana, Oregon, Massachusetts. Seven states in all announced that they will continue to, let me say, expand and utilize this loophole by sending out $20 LIHEAP statements -- payments to continue the heat-and-eat abuse. In addition, three states are considering the same actions, at least has been reported in the press, and that would be California, Wisconsin and Vermont. Also Speaker Boehner has strongly voiced his objection to this kind of abuse. Continued use of the heat-and-eat loophole threatens the amount of savings that will actually be achieved with SNAP reform. This committee is concerned as I am. I hope throughout the hearing, we will be able to hear from our panelists about this issue. Before us today is a panel of three witnesses that have an extensive knowledge of SNAP and have seen firsthand how many of these programs interact. We are joined by Sidney Squire, Secretary for Human Services Department in New Mexico, as well as a member of the Secretary's Innovation Group, or SIG. Secretary Squire has experienced working as an Associate Commissioner with the Texas Health and Human Services Commission, as well as Director of Economic Self-Sufficiency and Welfare Reform Administrator of the Florida Department of Children and Families. We have also Robert Dorr, who is currently a fellow at the American Enterprise Institute. Previously, Mr. Dorr served as a Commissioner of New York City's Human Resources Administration, where he administered twelve public assistance programs. Most recently, Mr. Dorr has been appointed to the National Hunger Commission, a bipartisan panel tasked with developing recommendations to reduce the need for government nutrition programs while maintaining a safety net for the poor. And we have Stacey Dean, Vice President for Food Assistance Policy at the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities. Ms. Dean brings a unique perspective, having previously worked in the Office of Management and Budget, before spending the last seventeen years working extensively with program administration and policymakers on nutrition policy. We appreciate the time each of you has given us to prepare for this hearing. Your testimony will be very helpful for us to better understand how SNAP interacts with other federal programs. I thank you, and I would like to recognize now my colleague from Ohio, Ranking Member Fudge, for any opening remarks she may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And let me just say, I just received notice that they have called votes. And so unfortunately, as we thought might happen, we're going to be playing around our vote schedule. But I will start, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for holding this hearing today on SNAP, and I thank all of our witnesses for being here. It certainly is timely to have our first hearing of this Subcommittee on SNAP. I'm glad to have this opportunity for us to learn more about this program. Earlier this year, the President signed into law a bipartisan farm bill where members of both sides of the aisle and across chambers were able to reach a consensus and show the country Congress can indeed work together. I don't think anyone was fully happy with the compromise reached, but on balance, it met the needs of the American people by providing certainty and sound agricultural policies for our consumers, farmers and ranchers. It is important to talk about the farm bill in the context of today's hearing because SNAP was one of the many controversial issues we had to work through in order to reach a compromise. That is why it's concerning to me when I hear reports of some of my colleagues wanting to suggest changes to a law that was enacted just a few months ago and is still in the process of being implemented. We negotiated the farm bill for the last three years, and it is now time to move on. Going forward, I hope we can better educate ourselves on nutrition programs in preparation for the next farm bill. A statistics show that SNAP is working well. It is a powerful anti-poverty program that has been efficient, effective and highly responsive to the needs of people. According to the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities, SNAP lifted nearly 4.7 million Americans out of poverty in 2011, including about 2.1 million children. Further, SNAP benefits often function as an economic stimulus, as every $1 in SNAP benefits generates about $1.70 in economic activity. Critics of the program like to point out that the number of participants has risen in recent times. This is not surprising, as growth can largely be attributed to the recession. The number of unemployed Americans increased by 94% from 2007 to 2011, and SNAP responded with a 70% increase over the same period. However, SNAP enrollment growth slowed in 2012 as the economy began to recover. Also, the Congressional Budget Office predicts that SNAP spending will begin to decline in 2015, with both unemployment and SNAP participation returning to pre-recession levels by 2022. These statistics show that SNAP is operating as it should, providing a supplemental source of funds to assist families with food purchases during tough times. The farm bill created pilot work programs with a focus on employment and training. Current law requires, I say "requires," SNAP participants to register for work, accept job offers and participate in workfare or training programs if they are offered. States may also require job training. Over the last decade, the number of low-income working households on SNAP has risen dramatically from 2 million in 2000 to about 6.4 million in 2011. This disappointing trend reflects both a rise in SNAP participation among eligible low-income working households, as well as wage erosion at the low end of the wage scale. Some workers earn wages so low that even full-time year-round employment is inadequate to keep their family out of poverty. In fact, the share of workers with below-poverty ranges was 28% in 2011. Further, there is often more to the story than meets the eye regarding those SNAP participants who do not work. These individuals are not lazy. Rather, in many cases, they lack the necessary job skills for employment or access or access to affordable childcare and transportation. I'm hopeful the pilot programs created by the farm bill will produce innovative approaches to ensuring low-income working families can secure employment with adequate wages so they can lift themselves out of poverty and off of SNAP. Contrary to what some critics of the program may believe, most Americans want a hand up, not a handout. As members of the Subcommittee on Department Operations, Oversight and Nutrition, it is imperative that we take the time to fully understand the intricacies of SNAP. As I said at the beginning of my statement, I hope this is an issue we can continue to explore as we look ahead to the next farm bill. We have invited three expert witnesses to this hearing so we can learn more about SNAP and how it interacts with other federal assistance programs. I am looking forward to hearing what they have to say. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
I thank Ranking Member Fudge for her opening statement, and I would return to the Chairman of the full committee, Mr. Lucas, for any statement he might have.
Mr. Chairman, I would waive off the opportunity to state in recognition of the fact that we have a vote underway on the floor.
I thank the Chairman, and I would point out that we are nearly ten minutes into the vote that's been called and roughly five or so minutes left to go on that tally. We expect that it's going to be a relatively long series of votes, perhaps an hour. But this hearing is in recess, subject to the call of the Chair, and I advise the members that it's my intention to resume the hearing immediately after the series of votes. Thank you. Thank you.
and that is that the opening statements were concluded, the witnesses were introduced, and other members were asked to include any opening statement into the record. And at this point, I'd like to recognize Ms. Squire for her testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. I'm very appreciative of this opportunity to appear. As the Secretary of New Mexico's Department of Human Services, my department administers food stamps, TANF, Medicaid, LIHEAP, and many other human service programs. In addition, I am a member of the secretary's innovation group.
Can you pull the mic a little closer, please?
I can. And that is a network of seventeen human service secretaries reporting to their governors from states that represent thirty-four percent of the U.S. Our members favor policies that promote work, self-sufficiency, and healthy families. Last year and this year, we were pleased to work with members of this committee and Representative Steve Sutherland in the development and passage of the ten-state food stamp work demonstration to be implemented no later than February of this coming year. I'm pretty sure New Mexico is going to be involved in that. The food stamp program, or SNAP, is a food supplement program whose intended purpose is to assure individuals with the very lowest incomes have enough to eat. But regrettably, this program has strayed from its earlier worthwhile purpose. As a way of comparison, in the year of 2001, one out of every fourteen households received food stamps. But in just a little more than a decade, one in five American households has now become dependent on taxpayer-funded food assistance. Is it likely that the proportion of American households unable to afford the purchase of sufficient food has increased more than threefold during that period? At the same time, the number of non-working, able-bodied households receiving benefits has ballooned. If you will look, you'll see a chart that shows just that. It's very simple, so I don't think I need to walk you through it. The financial costs of distributing free food to such a large portion of American families is a substantial burden on the average American taxpayer. Currently, sixty-five million households pay net federal income tax; the rest pay nothing or else they receive a payment through the EITC. The amount of annual federal income taxes needed to pay food stamp benefits is an astonishing thirteen-hundred per-income taxpaying household. With an average food stamp monthly benefit of $275, this means that each federal income taxpaying household is buying almost five months of groceries for other families each year. With food stamp usage now cutting a swath well into the middle class, is it fair to ask if we were anticipating that average Americans would be buying each other their groceries through the federal government? The recent recession has absolutely played a role in the enrollment surge, but it does not account for the size. As the chart below, again, very clear, shows, food stamp caseloads have gone up and down during periods of expansion and contraction without close correlation to the economic conditions. For example, during the period of strong economic growth between 2001 and 2007, food stamp caseloads increased by more than fifty percent. More significant factors include federal policy changes, in particular, the aggressive federal pressure on states to recruit additional beneficiaries, combined with the loosening of eligibility rules through a provision of law called categorical eligibility. Categorical eligibility permits households to bypass the normal income limit of one-hundred-and-thirty percent of the poverty level. And the resource limit also of two-thousand to three-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty imposed by SNAP if these households are eligible for TANF, for SSI, or the state general assistance program.
Ms. Squire?
Yes.
As the clock has ticked down on the five minutes, could I ask you to summarize the balance of your testimony?
Yes, sir.
And try to get the rest of it in questions, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So the thing that I want to bring home the most today, I won't even read it, is that because of this provision called categorical eligibility, in New Mexico, for instance, anybody who touches the TANF program, which can be anybody in the state, because the TANF program touches things like marriage, or counseling, or fatherhood, that don't have anything to do with assets at all. So you could have millions of dollars in the bank and still be eligible for food stamps just because you are touched by a TANF program, even something as simple as a brochure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Squire. And the chair now recognizes Mr. Dorr for his five-minute testimony. Mr. Dorr?
Thank you, Chairman King, and Ranking Member Fudge, and other members of the committee. I greatly appreciate being invited to testify today about the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. My name is Robert Dorr, and I am the Mortgage Fellow in Poverty Studies at the American Enterprise Institute. Prior to joining AEI, I spent eighteen years working in government social services programs for the state and city of New York. For most of those years, I had significant responsibilities for the operation of the SNAP program. And let me say first, SNAP plays an important role, helping struggling American families. The assistance it provides alleviates material hardship, reduces poverty, and combats hunger among poor children, the elderly, and the disabled. All Americans can be proud of the enormous amount of relief SNAP provides to struggling Americans. SNAP also can provide needed financial assistance to low-income, working families to make low wages go further. For a single mother with two children working full-time, SNAP can provide more than $2,500 annually in assistance to purchase food. And when combined with the federal earned income tax credit and child tax credit, that assistance can make the effective compensation of an eight-dollar-an-hour job the equivalent of more than $11 per hour. And if public health insurance or Medicaid is also provided and taken into account, then you can see the way in which America's generous assistance programs make low-wage work pay. But SNAP is not perfect. And as someone who strongly endorsed the work-support aspect of the program while I was Commissioner in New York City, I have been disturbed at the extent to which, in the past ten years, it has become a program that both supports work, but when combined with other assistance programs, appears to also be discouraging work. SNAP and some other assistance programs lack a strong work requirement. And it appears from data provided by USDA that an increasing number of non-elderly, non-disabled adults are receiving SNAP benefits but are not reporting any earnings to the SNAP offices. This is troubling for two reasons. First, it raises the question, how are these families getting by on only the aid provided by food stamps, which was never intended to cover all the needs of a family? And second, shouldn't these recipients of government assistance at least be strongly encouraged to take part in an effort to get them back to work where their incomes can rise more significantly? If the goal of expanding SNAP access to the program was to make SNAP more of a work-support for low-income workers, then the data should show more recipients reporting earnings to the food stamp offices. Another troubling aspect of the most recent past for the SNAP program is the extent to which it is no longer as responsive to an improving economy and lower unemployment as it once was. As the chart in my testimony shows, the longstanding pattern of SNAP going up with high unemployment and down with lower unemployment seems to have been broken, so that now, five years after the end of the recession, the expected drop in SNAP use has not occurred as it has in the past. In the four years following the recession of the early 1980s, during which unemployment levels rivaled those of the most recent recession, the number of food stamp participants decreased by over two million, and food stamp participants as a percentage of the population dropped by over 1.5 percent. The past five years have not followed this pattern of economic recovery. In the four years following the end of the downturn in 2009, the number of SNAP recipients increased by 7.3 million. Moreover, the percentage of population receiving food stamps increased from thirteen percent to fifteen percent. Were this recent recovery to behave similarly to that of the 1980s, by 2013, only 11.5 percent of the population would have been receiving SNAP benefits, thirty-six million individuals, as opposed to 47.6 million individuals. That is not a small difference. Now, there are all sorts of forces at work here. It could be that a recovery is just too weak, and certainly that is part of the story in many parts of the country. And some of the increase in recipients is due to households who have some work. But there is also a component of this development which is caused by the combination of assistance programs programs which do not have a work requirement, contributing to a situation where the motivation to work at all has been diminished, or the motivation to work off the books has been increased. I am concerned about this not because I am against helping poor Americans buy food for themselves and their children, as my record of promoting the food stamp program in New York makes clear. I have been a strong supporter of providing aid to people in need. But I also want them to escape poverty. And assistance programs that do not lead people into employment but instead finance non-work will have one sure outcome: they will keep people poor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. We recognize now Ms. Dean for her five-minute testimony. Ms. Dean?
Chairman King, Ranking Member Fudge, thank you for the invitation to testify today. I'm Stacey Dean, the Vice President for Food Assistance Policy at the Center on Budget and Policy. The Center on Budget and Policy Priorities, there we go. A nonpartisan policy institute. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to talk to you about SNAP today and SNAP's relationship to other programs. SNAP is designed to provide a basic nutrition benefit to low-income families, seniors, and people with disabilities who cannot afford an adequate diet. Today, the program helps feed more than 46 million people, including 21 million children and 9 million children living with family income below half the poverty line. While the program is not perfect, as Mr. Dorr points out, it does an admirable job of meeting its core purpose of providing food assistance to needy households. Moreover, recent research indicates SNAP's benefits aren't limited to providing relief from just poverty and hunger. SNAP also improves the long-term outcomes and self-sufficiency for individuals who received its benefits as children. For example, one of the most striking findings is that participation in SNAP as a young child improved high school completion rates by 18 percent. So although Ranking Member Fudge stole some of my thunder, I would like to highlight some of the program's key strengths. SNAP is highly responsive to need. It's an entitlement, meaning that anyone who qualifies can receive its benefits. This is the program's most powerful feature: enables SNAP to respond quickly and effectively during times of economic distress. Enrollment does expand when the economy weakens, and it contracts when the economy recovers. After growing substantially in response to the Great Recession and the subsequent slow recovery, SNAP costs have started falling and are expected to fall further. In April 2014, which represents the most recent data that we have, 1.5 million fewer people were on the program than when participation peaked in 2012. And CBO projects that by 2019, SNAP will return to its pre-recession spending levels as a share of the economy. Second, SNAP growth was not a result of waste or fraud. SNAP has an impressive track record with respect to program integrity. The share of SNAP payments issued to ineligible households in 2013 was less than 1 percent. And moreover, SNAP's efforts to measure and cut errors really set the standard across government programs. SNAP is a powerful anti-poverty program. While benefits are modest, just $1.40 per person per meal, they do have a big impact. SNAP lifted about nearly 5 million Americans above the poverty line in 2012, including 2.2 million children. And SNAP is an important work support. The number of low-income, working households on SNAP has risen dramatically. While only about 28 percent of families with an able-bodied adult had earnings in 1990, 55 percent of those families were working in 2012. Most SNAP recipients who can work do, turning to SNAP temporarily when they lose employment. So when you look at before and after their participation in SNAP, more than 80 percent of households with at least one working-age, non-disabled adult work in the year prior to or after receiving SNAP. So let me quickly pivot to SNAP's relationship to other programs. Of course, people cannot survive on SNAP benefits alone. Many people whose circumstances qualify them for SNAP also meet other programs' eligibility criteria. Working families with children who participate in SNAP may also, for example, receive childcare subsidies. And many SNAP recipients, or the majority of SNAP recipients, qualify for health coverage either under Medicaid or Medicare. And as such, state administrators like Mr. Dorr and Secretary Squires work to coordinate SNAP's delivery and program rules with other programs when appropriate. There are many cross-program coordination issues, so let me just highlight one for you. Other programs can and do rely upon SNAP's rigorous assessment of household financial circumstances. This can result in more efficient application and enrollment systems, as well as be the means to connect people to benefits that can help them beyond SNAP. Moreover, because SNAP's assessment is so robust, its information can actually increase the quality and program integrity in other programs. For example, Medicaid can rely upon verified information in the SNAP program rather than reassessing and reworking the same information. The School Meals Program adopts SNAP's determination of eligibility for children to qualify them for the free school meal programs rather than asking schools to replicate that effort. So to be sure, few state officials want to replicate SNAP's very high and prescriptive standards for eligibility and administration. Many, however, are willing to use SNAP's determinations to create efficiencies for other programs. Of course, we should all work to find ways to improve SNAP, and I think today's discussion will be an important contribution to that effort. But I really encourage the committee to reject proposals that would weaken the program's ability to provide food assistance or to experiment with ideas that risk compromising the program's proven success. So thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Your timing is immaculate.
I practiced.
And I would, the chair would like to remind the members that they'll be recognized for questioning in the order of seniority, for members who were present at the follow-the-gavel, and after that, members will be recognizing the order that they arrived. And recognizing myself, for first questions, I would turn to Ms. Squire. And I believe in your testimony, the time didn't allow you to get to a point of an exhibit that's in your written testimony that has a directive dated September 30, 2009, from the USDA Food and Nutrition Services. Could you explain that directive and the impact it has had on, let's say, the policy in New Mexico and perhaps other states that you might be aware of?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair and members. I've worked in many states, five states and the federal government. And in Texas, in 2009, we were told by the federal government that we would now be acknowledged, not quite rewarded, but acknowledged, for adding people to the food stamp rolls. This is what USDA, FNS wanted us to do. And I did actually attend, in New Orleans, an award ceremony for Texas for adding a number of people to the rolls. I was slightly horrified about that. We are doing the same thing in New Mexico, and I believe every other state. And I think that the push, and I will be fair, the push has gone through more than one administration. The push to put people on food stamps has caused an incredible rise. And to be acknowledged by the federal government to do so has caused more people to join onto the food stamp program.
And Ms. Squire, the language that I see in this memo says, "We encourage you to continue promoting expanded categorical eligibility as a way to increase SNAP participation and reduce state workloads."
Mr. Chair, that's exactly true.
And it has had a significant impact across the country as far as your experience is concerned.
Yes, sir.
I think, and Mr. Dorr, you've dealt with large claims in a large-population state, and I've noticed, actually, a significantly high degree of professionalism come out of that arena. I think you're in the crucible a little harder than many others. And so, from that standpoint, I would ask you, if you had a limited budget to work with with regard to SNAP benefits, and you had to get that carved down to something that was manageable for our, what would be your approach with regard to categorical eligibility? Do you have any creative things like fingerprints, any other items you might want to discuss that could?
Sure. The state of New York, after I had left, made the decision to accept categorical eligibility and with regard to the asset test. And I had felt, as a city administrator, that that was a mistake, because I felt that it allowed people who had assets that could be available to help them in times of need to avoid reporting those assets. And we had an experience where we felt by not investigating assets and by not being able to inquire about assets, people were more likely who did have sufficient means and would not be eligible for the program based on income, where it was easier for them to get on the program. So that would definitely be something that I would speak about. In my testimony, I suggested it should be higher than the asset test used to be, but it should not be unlimited assets.
And with regard to other categorical eligibility?
Well, the income.
With regard to the TANF, for example?
I think that in any program where you say to someone you're automatically eligible based on the fact that you've read a brochure or that you've been given a brochure, it seems to me that sends a kind of message that isn't really the way we want our programs to be run. So I wasn't comfortable with that categorization. But the thing I was most concerned about was the asset test. We did have finger imaging as an effort to protect against duplicate benefit issuances. Mayor Bloomberg felt very strongly that it was an effective measure. It was an effective measure. In New York City, we still have it for welfare applicants, for TANF. But Governor Cuomo, under some pressure from the federal government, decided that we could no longer do that. And it wasn't so much that we caught people as much as we deterred people from applying for benefits in multiple jurisdictions.
What if we went down a path that might be a block grant on a per capita basis, or perhaps a cost share, so the states had some skin in the game?
Well, one of the characteristics is that, given the current benefit levels, a block grant of the SNAP calculated based on the current benefit amounts going out to states would be quite high. So if the company, if the country is heading into a stronger recovery where the need for these sorts of benefits is reduced, I think the states would have dollars freed up, and they should be required to spend it on social services programs, but they could spend, I think, more effectively than a stipend for food.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. I thank the witnesses, and I turn to Ranking Member Fudge for questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But because I know that time is fleeting and we do have another series of votes, I'm going to yield at this point to Mr. McGovern, and I will ask my questions at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the ranking member. I just want to make sure that we understand the context here before I go into my comments or my questions. I mean, we live in a country where there are 50 million people who are hungry or food insecure. You know, close to 17 million of them are kids. So we have a real issue here with people living in the United States, the richest country in the history of the world, that are vulnerable and that need some support. And Ms. Squire, when you said that people who earn millions of dollars, have millions of dollars in the bank, are eligible for SNAP, if that's the case in New Mexico, someone ought to be fired, because that's not the case in anyplace else. I know, I don't know too many millionaires who are dying to get on SNAP. I don't know why they would. The average benefit is about $1.40 per meal per day, so it's not something that I think people aspire to. You know, in terms of categorical eligibility, we all ought to keep in mind that this was a conservative idea proposed by John Kasich as a way to reduce some of the costs on states, and to make it easier, quite frankly, for people who are eligible for a variety of programs to be able to get them. You know, being poor is hard work, and sometimes it is a bureaucratic maze to be able to find out what you are eligible for. So this was supposed to streamline the process. So, you know, before we throw categorical eligibility out the window, let's understand what it's about. And I'm going to yield to Ms. Dean for a comment.
Yeah, I just want to throw in a few of the facts about categorical eligibility. I think there's just been a little too much rhetoric. This committee considered repealing categorical eligibility over the last year or two, and the estimate that CBO gave you showed that it would reduce baseline spending and remove people from the program equal to about 2 percent. So there's no way that categorical eligibility is the cause or the fuel for caseload growth. I think another important thing to point out is while states under the option have the flexibility to adopt a less restrictive gross income test, meaning relaxing the rule of about $2,200 a month gross income for a family of three, say, to slightly higher so that a working mom paying a huge amount of her income in rent and childcare, she still has to go through a rigorous assessment of eligibility and qualify after her disposable income is counted.
I appreciate you for clarifying that. And, Mr. Dorr, you know, I agree with you, this is not a perfect program, and I think we need to look at ways to better help people transition from poverty into independence. You know, I think the benefit is, in my opinion, not generous enough. People who are on SNAP usually end up in food banks because it's not this overly generous benefit. The majority of people who are able to work actually do work. And I'll give you an example. I was at a, I spent a night at a homeless shelter in Worcester, Massachusetts about a month ago, as a family homeless shelter. The majority of adults in that homeless shelter worked. They were making minimum wage, just enough so their benefits began to get cut, they hit this cliff, but not enough to be able to put a down payment on a department and afford to pay rent in Worcester, Massachusetts. So maybe we ought to be talking about, you know, making work pay a little bit better, and maybe increasing the minimum wage. You know, from 2009 to 2014, the cost of milk increased by 17 percent, but the minimum wage hasn't changed. From 2009 to 2014, the cost of eggs increased 23 percent, but the minimum wage hasn't changed. So I mean, part of what we ought to be talking about, as well as kind of streamlining the program, is making sure that people are getting an adequate benefit to put nutritious food on the table for their families. And, you know, and I, you know, I'm curious, you know, there's been some criticism of some large employers who pay their workers low wages, knowing that even full-time employees will qualify for SNAP. And does anyone have an opinion on this? Is the federal government subsidizing SNAP?
Well, I would just address a couple of questions about this rigorous application process. The SNAP application process has changed a lot in the last 10 years, and to the extent that it's not quite, the number of rules, the number of recertification periods, the ability to do interviews, not face-to-face but over the phone or over the internet, have made the process much easier to be accurate. So if you don't have a lot of rules that you have to follow in order to be sure you're giving benefits to people who are really eligible, then it's easier not to break any of those rules. So I just would, I want to caution you, I was proud of our QC record in New York City and New York State as well. But some of it came because the job got easier, because the rules were lessened and reduced.
Yeah, just one final thing. As a member of Congress who does a lot of casework, you know, a lot of people who fall in hard times end up coming to us because they can't quite figure out the system. So maybe it's gotten easier. But I will just tell you that it is not easy for a lot of poor families when they find out that someone has lost a job, and they can't afford their rents, and they can't afford to pay their heating bill. So I just.
There's a balance. There needs to be a balance.
It is a balance, and I think we ought to strike that balance. I just worry about the fact that when we talk about these issues, sometimes we end up demonizing these people who, and I'm not saying you are, I'm not saying you are at all, but sometimes we end up demonizing people who are poor, who desperately do not want to be poor, but, and who are working, and who are working.
Well, that's the point.
The gentleman's time has, the gentlelady's time has expired. You'll be allowed to go to answer the question, Mr. Dorr.
... benefits during the time that I served both at the state and the city may be greater than any other constituency. I believed in helping people. But the purpose was to help people who also could get into work, and often what we found is that people were not reporting earnings when we expected they would. And that's a problem that we have to address.
The gentlelady's time has expired. I turn now to the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I get into my questions, I want to say thank you to a group back home in the district that I represent, in Thomasville and Valdosta. They're also in Albany and Douglas. It's a second harvest food bank. They, 13,000 square miles, 30 counties that they operate in, where they take the vegetables and the bread and the other things from grocers who maybe aren't quite up to standard for selling, and make sure that they're able to help get that to many of the people who need it the most in our district. And as we talk about this issue, there are a lot of people out there who are trying to resolve this issue for Americans across the country, and it's a serious issue. And, Mr. McGovern, I certainly appreciate your passion for it. I know we differ on some ideas of how to resolve it, but I do agree with you that we, there are people out there that need the help, and there are a lot of people that are out there working to help them, and I do appreciate your passion on it. The reason is, as we talk about the 2 percent, if you will, whether it's 2 percent or 5 percent, the challenge we've got right now, to me, is the integrity of the system. And when you allow the integrity to start to slide through, whether it's categorical eligibility, or whether it's turning your head and looking the other way, and I would suggest that even with the states, some of the states, what they're doing is essentially state-sanctioned gaming of the system, then any of the programs lose support of the American citizen, and that's where we've got the problem. And whether it's 1 percent fraud, or 2 percent fraud, or 10 percent fraud, we have a responsibility to address that fraud, because if we don't, then... that fraud because if we don't, then in the end, we'll be able to serve fewer people and the money doesn't go to the people who actually need it the most. So again, I want to say thank you to Second Harvest Food Bank, who I have the privilege of representing, who does a great job of getting quality food at a tremendously reduced price to the people who need it throughout three congressional districts in the state of Georgia, one of which is mine. With that said, I want to, I want to move to the integrity of the system and, if you will, and I, Ms. Squire, as we talk about the difference in state and federal requirements for the system, do you believe that the states have a better chance of putting the integrity in the system? Or do you think that the federal government would do a better job of putting integrity into the system?
Mr. Chair Representative, I believe that the states would do-
Your microphone?
We've done, we have shown with the TANF program what the states can do, a hugely successful program. And while I know you don't want to dwell on this fact, I think one of the things we can do in the food stamp program is what we did in the TANF program, and that's have a work requirement for those who are not already working because I do understand that you have poor out there that are working and struggling every day. But the able-bodied, I'm not talking about disabled people or older people, able-bodied people with the able mind have risen that are, that are now getting food stamps. And there's a reason for that, and that's because we've made it so easy, and I'd like to see the states run programs that fit for them specifically.
Would any of the other of you like to comment on that briefly?
You want to mull? I think that what we have right now is a strong partnership, federal oversight for a national problem, which is hunger in America. People are not different. There are hunger in Kentucky versus Texas versus Washington. Having a national nutrition standard, I think, is crucial. The rules and the rigor with which you establish for the program that states then operate on. And I think states, by and large, do a terrific job. Should, can we hold them to a higher standard, push them to do better and more? Absolutely, both with respect to integrity and serving all eligible people. But I think it's been a very successful partnership to date.
I think that we've been doing this for a long time, this way, and I think that there's room for experimentation and testing of different approaches in which states could experiment using the food stamp benefits or the funding provided by food stamps to run a program that encouraged work more and provided assistance equally as effectively.
I certainly support the work requirements. And if I can, Mr. Chairman, I know my time has expired. I have one other organization in Georgia, a group called Mana, that has done a wonderful job in helping alleviate hunger and malnutrition throughout the world. Fitzgerald, Georgia, they take the good Georgia peanuts and they mix it with vitamins and it's provided for children around the world, and they've done an excellent job. And I want to say thank you to the people there for what they've done.
Thank the gentleman. The gentleman yields back, and I remind the panel that we are expecting votes in about 10 minutes, which means we might have 20 at the outside, and I appreciate your cooperation. I recognize Ms. Luanne Grisham for her five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome, Ms. Squire. And I'm really going to focus on New Mexico, and I wish we were doing that in a way because we're proud of what's going on in New Mexico, and I'll repeat this again in my testimony and my question, but we're now the most food insecure for children in the country and nearly the most food insecure for adults in the country. So as we talk about partnerships, the role for federal oversight, and given that I've been in a cabinet, it's a hard job, as Ms. Squire's will attest to. But in fact, our Human Services Department's been in, has had questioned and actually had a judge require that they do things differently in terms of many of their benefit programs, which is why you absolutely need a partnership. And I really appreciate that you're here because I do think we need to have reform conversations and to think about proactive ways to make these programs more stable for the future. And I know that you haven't been doing that in New Mexico and don't, you're not working and won't testify before the New Mexico legislature, so I'm really honored that you're willing to come before us today. Now, you're part of a thing called the Secretary's Innovation Group. Now, it recommends that SNAP be converted to a fixed allocation with work requirements, 30 hours per week being the family norm. Now, I think every New Mexican, and I agree, would love that every able-bodied adult would have meaningful employment, but let's be mindful about the conditions around the country. And let's talk about New Mexico. We are ranked 48th for job growth among the states. Albuquerque, which is the heart of my district, is in a double dip recession, the only community in the country in that situation, lost 2,700 jobs over the last year. As I said, we have the highest rate of food insecurity, 31% for children. So bearing in mind that New Mexico has these challenges that our residents face, I'm trying to understand exactly what you're proposing. When there aren't enough jobs to go around, do we tell these kids and these families, "I'm sorry, you'll be hungry" because 31%, it looks to me, that's exactly what we said, without a mandatory work program? Ms. Squire, how do we reconcile that?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair Representative, and I too would like to brag a little bit about New Mexico because we are number one in the nation on the school breakfast program, and we have also instituted school breakfast after the bell. We do school lunches, and now we are introducing both-
But those don't require work programs, so let's focus on the work requirements. And in fact, I would disagree with you about the efforts in school nutrition, which have also been under severe and consistent criticism. So talk to me about how people are going to get jobs in states like New Mexico. And given your proposal, just how would that work to take the 31% of kids who are hungry and make them not hungry?
Well, Mr. Chair Representative, I would disagree with you a little bit about the jobs that are out there. What I'm doing right now is running a program in a little part of the state called Hobbs, and it was a pizza delivery, Domino's, and they needed, they needed people to work and they couldn't get them.
Because Hobbs has a huge oil and gas boom, Ms. Squire, with so many high-paying jobs, six-figure incomes for people who are doing custodial work and driving trucks. So let's just focus on the area.
They couldn't get them because the people couldn't pass the drug test.
I'm going to go on to something else, Ms. Squire. In New Mexico, you've managed to cut TANF benefits and reduce the number of participants in the program by 35%. Seems to me you've got plenty of flexibility. You've also slowed enrollment in what used to be a model SNAP program to the point where 10,000 people are caught in a bake backlog waiting to receive benefits. When we add that backlog to the other programs, there are at least 30,000 people that are waiting for months to receive emergency assistance. This became so urgent that in May, a federal judge ruled that the New Mexico Human Services Department was failing in its obligation to provide timely services and ordered the department to remove systemic and programmatic barriers and process applications immediately. Again, it seems to me that you've found many ways to have flexibility in the programs and make it difficult to enroll and to reach as few people as possible. I think it's important that this committee be clear that when we talk about flexibility and reform, and it sounds like it's a good thing, but in reality, it could mean kicking off the very people we're trying to protect, that we need to find reforms that really target to that population. And I'd like to ask, yes or no, that if Congress were to adopt your recommendations, would we, would I expect to see even bigger backlogs in the state of New Mexico?
There are no current backlogs, ma'am. And you're right that there was a backlog, and that is because the Affordable Care Act and the federal government sent incomplete files to us, so we had extra work to do to the tune of about 30,000 of them a month.
I would completely disagree with you about that. But in any event, I raise these issues to point out that the partnership is important. New Mexico had a model SNAP program. It does not today, and that making sure that we have a balanced approach, Mr. Chairman, I think is an effective way forward. I yield back.
The gentle lady yields back, and anticipating no regional disagreement between the Ohio members, I would turn to the gentleman from Ohio, Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say that these programs are important and everybody that needs help should get the help. And I'm pleased to say that in the recent farm bill we passed, we did increase the funding for food banks. I think, as Mr. Scott talked about earlier, food banks play a really good role and prevent a lot of food from going to waste, sort of help the needy. My first thought is, you know, Mr. Dorr, about, to the whole panel, side statistics, you know, how participation in SNAP has increased, and even during the business cycles, you know, it doesn't go like this anymore, it just keeps going like this up. And of course, that could be, I guess, you know, we're in a stagnant economy, part-time work and low-income jobs, and that's another issue for another day, I guess. But I think we do need to make sure we protect taxpayers' interests. And, you know, there's nearly 50 million people on SNAP program now, and you mentioned, Mr. Dorr, that some are working off the books, some are, refuse to work. Do you have any idea what percentage of people on SNAPs might be really not eligible?
Well, this is a hard number to get at because, and we need to continue to work on it, because it's not reported exactly the way you'd expect it to be. Because when someone applies for SNAP, they, they answer questions concerning whatever income's in their household, and one question is, do you have earnings? And so we should know how many people who are not disabled, not elderly, and not children are getting SNAP but don't report any earnings. Now, we, we think, in my testimony, I've estimated what we think it is, and it's grown. And so it's a large number. And I know that in my experience in New York City, that there were people, and I don't have a number, it needs further study, who were receiving Medicaid and SNAP and working in a good fashion, except in a way that was off the books.
So you're saying, it is a significant number?
It is an issue. There isn't any question it's a-
Then to follow that a little bit, what is the average time, this is the panel, not just Mr. Dorr, people being on SNAP in the past and maybe today, has that changed? Is it the average time? And what is the average?
I don't have that.
The latest, the latest study was from about 10 years ago. The median length of stay at the time was 10 months for workers. It was shorter, about eight months, and for seniors, for example, with fixed incomes, longer, 12 to 24 months.
And I would just point out that 10 years ago is a long time in the change of the SNAP program.
No, I, without a doubt, but that is the most recent available data.
On this categorical aid, does that help people get off SNAP programs? I mean, does it work the other way? We've had so much discussion about if you qualify for LAHE and these other programs, you're automatically, you qualify for food stamps, my understanding. Now, if you fall off from one of the other programs, where they come in and look and see if you still qualify for food stamps, how's that mechanism work?
Do you want to address that, Matt?
Well, just to say, the reasons governors, governors or state commissioners adopted the option, for example, was to help stabilize working families. We have working families just above the income cutoff in SNAP, which again, for a family of three, is a little over $2,100 a month, who might be paying quite a bit of their income for rent and childcare, and wanted to offer them the help of food assistance because after they're, after we looked at their budgets, their disposable income, they couldn't afford a basic diet for their kids. So with that added help, does it help keep them in their job? That was, that was the theory of change of these governors. Just again, to reiterate, they still had to come in and go through a thorough assessment of eligibility. What categorical eligibility allows is a relaxing of the gross income rule or the asset test. It does not automatically qualify someone for the benefit. They still have to be determined eligible.
Just another question to the panel. In the agricultural act that we passed, is there incentives in there to help people to get on work, off SNAP, to go to work?
You know, that question you're raising is an interesting one in terms of the pressures and forces of the program from either the federal government or the state. And there, I don't, in 18 years of being in the program, I don't sense that there was ever some sort of desire to help people get off. There certainly was a great desire to help people get on who were eligible. And, but the, but SNAP's not a program that focuses on ending your, or working this so that you're no longer needed, in my judgment.
It sure seems like, when you just said, that a significant amount of people that are receiving SNAP benefits can work or refuse to work, and that we ought to-
Well, there, you know, I'm not so sure about refuse to work. They're not being asked. You know, remember, in the TANF program, we've set up these programs to help people get into employment. They do exist, but we're not making them available or encouraging or requiring SNAP recipients who are not reporting earnings to take advantage of them. That's what I want. I don't, and remember, it's not to go get a job, it's come in and be engaged in an activity or receive a service that can help get you a job. That's also part of a requirement associated with work.
But I'm worried this is leaving the impression that there aren't participants on the program who are in fact working. And in fact, that may be one reason, I think you pointed to it in the beginning of your questions, to why SNAP caseloads remain elevated even though the unemployment rate is falling. Setting aside the unemployment rate not being the perfect measure of the economy, we probably have many individuals who weren't working who've taken low-paying, low-hour jobs. They remain eligible.
My time's expired, but yield back to the chairman. That's just because we've got this stagnant economy that's just grown at barely 1% or negative.
I thank the gentleman from Ohio, and I would now recognize Ms. Negret McLeod for her five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I was living in another world and you were living all in a parallel world because in California, there were no jobs to be found. I don't know about your states, but in California, we had such a, such a depression during the recession that I don't know where TANF workers, where food stamp workers, people that are ON recipients, were able to get a job. Even people that had degrees, that had PhDs, couldn't get a job. So I don't know, maybe I'm living somewhere else.
Well, in, in New York City, we had a pretty strong economy. The recession hit us and we came out of it sooner and we came out faster, so we did have a lot of job opportunities. There isn't any question, and that's why I'm concerned about it, is because I also have these people receiving this benefit that I thought was a work support, but they're not working and there was an economy that refused jobs.
Well, I guess, I guess New York is a little more lenient than California because anybody that was receiving any kind of aid of any kind had to have some way to show that they were looking for a job, A, that if they had a job, then their, their benefits for certain programs were then lessened or cut off completely. So I guess what I have to ask you all, if any policy changes that would reduce the SNAP eligibility, is it going to reduce eligibility for any other program in your states?
It would, Mr. Chair Representative, it would more mirror the eligibility as opposed to reduce it. For instance, I think what some of us are proposing, not all of us, are that we do a TANF-like program and mirror the food stamp program to that program. So I think it would be more of a mirroring and not a reducing.
Although certainly people on SNAP qualify for other things. For example, children enrolled in the SNAP program are auto-enrolled into the free school meals program, which is very sensible. These are families who are very low-income and they've self-identified themselves as food insecure. If we restricted eligibility for SNAP and those families weren't on SNAP, they potentially would not qualify, for example, for the free school meals program.
So then potentially we could have a lot of kids that if, I'm sure you know that any child that's hungry cannot learn.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
The gentle lady yields back, and the chair now recognizes the gentleman from Louisiana, Mr. McAllister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I just want to make sure that we're all clear on is, you know, we talk a lot about, about the people and the jobs and all, and I want to make it clear that the blame here is not to put on the people that are on the SNAP program. The blame is to be put on those of us that sit in Congress, past, present, and future, because we have created this system that has not the accountability and has allowed the abuse and the different ways that we're sitting here talking about today, to make sure the accountability is there for the people that are either on the system today, will be on the system tomorrow, whether they have a job and they're receiving SNAP or they're not receiving SNAP. So with that, there's a few questions I want to ask, and this one goes to you, Ms. Dean. You correctly pointed out that the temporary benefit boost was part of the 2009 Recovery Act, and ended in November of last year. Your testimony cites the reductions of 7% over the first nine months of fiscal year 2014, which was October 2013 through June 2014. Is the reduction in benefits so due to the lapse of bonus benefits in the Recovery Act?
That's quite a bit of it in terms of the spending. Actually, and then as a result, average benefits are a little bit lower than we thought they would be, so in fact, there's a little bit more there. But we in fact also have fewer participants in the program. So it is both things that are going on.
So you say there's been a reduction in the number of beneficiaries?
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Dorr testified that even though the economy has begun to strengthen, the number of recipients is not dropping at an expected rate.
It is not dropping at the rate it dropped in the nine, in the, in the 80s. It has not dropped in the rate that it dropped in the 90s.
But I wouldn't-
And, and there's always a lag. There's always a lag, but this is a long lag. But this is a long lag. This is a longer lag than before. And I should also point out that while it has dropped in the past year, in the most recent month, it went up. So there's something different happening now.
Right.
That used to happen.
But I would say-
There may be an explanation for that, but it's different.
But this downturn, it was so far in excess of anything we had experienced in previous recessions. We lost more jobs. Individuals were unemployed for longer periods of time. And we're adding far fewer jobs back to the economy, many of which are at low pay and low hours. So to me, I would like to see the caseloads coming down because the economy is rebounding, but it hasn't done that yet.
And I agree. And I think everyone on this panel, everyone in Congress agrees that we would love to see a society where no one was on the SNAP program. We would love to see everyone above the poverty level. That's what we all strive for. I represent the ninth poorest district in the country, and I see it every day. And what I see with the SNAP program is, I do see the abuse. And what I would like to see is accountability happen to where the program is, to where we provide, to where the farm bill works, where the farmers and SNAP program works together, to where the nutrition value is there, but it's only certain items that provides nutrition. To where it's incentivized being on the SNAP program, as to where there's only a certain amount of items that you can go in the grocery store and you can get. It's not just anything that you can go in there and get. It's not an EBT card that gives you anything. It's those nutritional value items that you do get. So that you are limited to what you get, but it is the nutritional value that you need. So kids are not hungry, they are getting what they need.
Congressman, Mayor Bloomberg proposed just a test of limiting what you could purchase with SNAP by eliminating something that was clearly not nutritious and a complete waste with regard to health, sugar and sweetened beverages. And the USDA rejected an experiment that would allow us to limit. So you're asking for something that is just very hard to change in the history of USDA, and it's unfortunate. But it is something worth considering, especially considering the amount of money that is spent on products that are not of nutritional value.
And that's where I come back to where I say the accountability comes back on us, the body of Congress. This is our fault. This is not the recipient's fault. And you was talking about, how do we get people off of it? We've worked real hard on the marriage. This is one case where we should have been working harder on the divorce. We should have been trying to figure out, how does it come a time to where we get them off the program? And how do we work to get them off the program? We work on better education. We work on giving them the tools to get those better jobs. And yeah, you're right, we have to have the jobs. We have to create and put the jobs there for them to have. But when the jobs are there, and just like you was talking about in Hobbs and other places, we've got to have the skill sets to be able to go get those better-paying jobs when they are there, whether they're the six-figure jobs or whatever. But if we don't give them the skill sets, we failed as a society to get them prepared. And that comes back on us as a body of Congress. And that's not a Democrat issue, that's not a Republican issue, that's an American issue. And we are failing this country when we don't give those tools, whenever we're marrying them to the problem, and we're developing a culture, year after year, decade after decade, of making them be dependent on us as a government. So with that, I yield back my time. Chairman?
The gentleman from Louisiana yields back, and the chair now recognizes Ranking Member Fudge for her five minutes and any closing statement she might choose to offer.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Chairman. Let me just get a few things clear that I was confused about. Mr. Dorr, my colleague, Mr. Gibbs, asked you about the number of people that you thought were basically scamming the system, and you said you didn't know. So if you don't know, you can't say it's significant. You either don't know, or you do know.
Well, you know, I-
Do you know?
The-
The question is, sir, do you know?
What I said in my testimony was that the extent to which unreported income is in the households of SNAP recipients, off-the-books earnings, is something we should-
Do you know the number?
I do not know the number, but-
That's the question, sir. That is my question.
I'm giving you my spirit.
Secondly, you indicated that these people are being paid off the books. So if you are aware of businesses who are illegally paying people under the table, have you reported that abuse?
I don't, no, I have not reported that abuse.
Okay, that's the answer that I need. You have not. Either you don't know, or you've not reported. In either case, you should.
No, it's something that needs to be studied and looked into, because it's clearly happened.
So you don't know? Okay. Let me just ask this question as well. Ms. Squire, you indicated that if someone just gets a brochure, that they are eligible for TANF. Ms. Dean, is that accurate?
TANF.
It's a, under the TANF block grant, all kinds of, states can spend TANF funds on a wide variety of needs. TANF bottom line is a funding stream, not a program. So yes, states can spend TANF funds on a brochure.
How the state chooses, correct?
Yes.
But that would be food stamps that I was indicating.
Go right ahead.
If someone receives a brochure about TANF, that can, in New Mexico, make them eligible.
It can, it can. But you indicated that every single person that gets it is eligible. That is what you said. And I just want to be clear. And I believe in New Mexico, that's true. Okay. So that's New Mexico. I can't argue that, because I don't know New Mexico well.
That's why I'm over the 100.
Okay. Let me just also ask, I mean, we've heard a lot about fraud, and my friend, Mr. McAllister, who I think is such a wonderful person, and he says that he sees this in his district, I've heard a lot of my colleagues say the same thing. But I don't know that anybody reports it. If there's so much fraud and you see it, why would it not be reported? We're all sworn to uphold the law in this body. And so I would hope that if someone sees fraud, that they would report it. Because then maybe we could get a handle, and maybe we give Mr. Dorr the answers that he needs as to who is not doing what they should be. Ms. Dean, you talked earlier about the strong program integrity and payment accuracy for SNAP. Could you just elaborate just a bit on that for me briefly?
Sure. First, when an applicant applies, they do fill out, in many places, a very lengthy application, and then they're interviewed, and they have to provide paper verification of much of what they attest to on the application. After, then states, an independent body within the state, quality control reviewers pull each month a sample of cases and go back and independently check those. The federal government then goes in and re-reviews those. So it's an incredibly rigorous quality control system. Last month, USDA issued the results for over and underpayments through this system for 2013, and they found record lows for the seventh consecutive year. States have been bringing those over and underpayment error rates down. The overpayment rate fell to 2.6%, and the underpayment rate was 0.6%, which means a net loss to the government of about 2%. And I just want to compare that quickly to other system. The last year, the IRS took a look at something similar, was in 2006, and there we had 17% of taxes legally due went unpaid. So frankly, the system does compare relatively well.
Thank you. And I remember earlier on, Ms. Squire mentioned the fact of the numbers of people who pay taxes and those who did not. And I'm certain you meant to include in that group that does not multimillion-dollar, multinational corporations as well, whose taxes could significantly help poor people and hungry people. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that, again, you know, SNAP is something that people have very strong opinions about, pro and con. But what I do know is that there are many hungry children in this country who, but for SNAP, would not survive from day to day. There are many people in this country who work hard every day to make a living and feed their families, who just need an extra help, just need a hand up, not a handout. And so I am hopeful that at some point, we can come together and decide what to do with this. As far as I'm concerned, we've made a decision, the farm bill is done. Let's look forward to some things that we really can change. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
I thank the gentlelady, the ranking member, and all of the witnesses. In summary of this hearing, I would point out that it's clear to me that the administration and the previous administration both promoted SNAP signups in various ways, particularly with the September 30, 2009 statement. If we're looking at reining in growth, we didn't speak very much about the governors